So I'll go ahead and call the special meeting to order at 4:34. Thank you for your patience with the time, we are getting set. On here is no pledge of allegiance. Do you feel like we should do a pledge of allegiance? For the work sessions, we don't. Yeah, let's go ahead and do it. So we'll add that. All right, go ahead, Pat, you could start us off. All right, so now we'll move on to item number two, which is, well, three, which is public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for a board response or for public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right to privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Chair or acting chair may interrupt or terminate any individual if the statements are out of order. Any public comment?
No public comment tonight?
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number four, which is Mr. Steve Joel from McPherson and Jacobson. Over to you.
Is it on? Oh, awesome. Great to be here. Thanks for having us. I learned not to fly into Bozeman. I won't do that again. I learned about the continental divide and how there's two different weather patterns. I mean to tell you, it was snowing hard in Bozeman when I landed at 9:30 this morning. So I'm glad to be here. Flying out of Missoula in the morning, though, which is, should be better. This is an exciting time for you. This is a chance. I understand just in our introductions, you're a relatively new board, and a search process is a coming together of board members, because there's no more important role and responsibility than selecting the next superintendent of schools. And that's what, that's what we specialize in, and we're excited for you. I was in, speaking to all the Idaho superintendents on Friday, just another consulting thing that I was doing, and I told them I was gonna be heading to Missoula and doing the Missoula search, and two of them actually came up to me afterwards and said, "Dream job. I'll wait to see what the posting is." I don't know if you respect Idaho or not as a, as a state, but they seem to be pretty good people. So anyway, really glad to be here and had a chance, I think, to meet each of you. I'm Steve Joel. I just retired after 37 years as superintendent, the last 12 in Lincoln, Nebraska. I am, I sit on the executive board of McPherson and Jacobson, and I've probably done 70 searches in the last 25 years, and most, closest, closest to you has been Wyoming, but I've been in just about all the states as a superintendent. So, sir, so anyway, we're really excited to be here. Let me have my colleague introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Shar Johns, and I actually live in the Bitterroot Valley. I retired as an administrator in California five years ago and moved here, moved here to help my parents out, and so love being here, happy to be here. I worked for the county office of education in Nevada County, a small rural county in California, and helped them with superintendent searches, each of the districts that we worked with there, and helped with their oversight and provided support. So along with being a teacher and principal and site administrator and district office administrator, then I ended up at the county office, and that's where I retired. So really happy to be here and love that I'm so close for this search. So, thank you.
So the big work tonight is to establish a calendar, and I want to thank Tracy, probably gonna do it multiple times. We've had some correspondence, and she's taken the liberty, working with us, to put some calendar dates together, but we want to solidify those and make sure that that meets your, your specifications. And we want to develop search criteria, which is our first iteration of what we're gonna go out and begin recruiting. Our intent is to start to, start to have this posted midweek, Wednesday or Thursday, and then really become aggressive. We have a timeline, we think's gonna work very well for you, and we'll talk you through that, exactly what that looks like. And then we want to identify the criteria. What are, what are we looking for? What, what does this person, this next leader of your school district need to possess to be successful? And you'll help us with that, because that's just so important. As we work with candidates, they want to know about you. They want to know who are they gonna be working with. But we're also gonna vet what you tell us tonight with your stakeholder groups. And those of you that were part of the presentation we made, we talked about our services, one of the things that we think really separates us is that we'll, we'll, your folks in, in your district are gonna appreciate being involved in a process, and it's very open, it's very transparent, and we do a, I think, a very good job of figuring out and determining what the consensus is, the trends, and then we'll report those to you. And then, and that becomes a little bit of a report card. So for those of you that are new on the board, you know, you may know what your, your folks are thinking and how they feel about the school system, and our guess is that it's probably very positive, but this will verify that. And there'll be, if there are some gaps, those will emerge, and we'll share those with you, and we'll also share them with candidates, because we want candidates to be duly informed regarding this opportunity and challenge. So with that, if you look at the, the calendar that Tracy's put together, what, what we're very interested in doing, again, is announcing this vacancy. We'll put it on our website, maybe Wednesday, I would imagine. We want to advertise it and, and vet until December 28th. And the reason we picked December 28th, we want to give your superintendent, candidates that are interested, we want to give them a little bit of the Christmas vacation to finish up their work. Now, I have to tell you, as I tell every board, you're all gonna want to know how many applicants you have by the end of November and then 1st of December, but as I, I just finished up the commissioner of education position in Mississippi, and, and the way this works with candidates, 72 hours prior to the deadline date is when they hit send on their applications. And so we don't really get concerned about numbers unless we're not having conversations with potential candidates. So we're looking at closing it on the 28th. Shar and I were looking at November 28th and 29th, we're gonna talk to you about the stakeholder groups, we're coming in for a couple of days and meeting with the groups that Tracy's put together. It's a, it's a pretty, pretty aggressive schedule, but it involves everybody in your district. And so we're, we'll do it with at least two of us, and if we can get a third up here to help, because it's pretty comprehensive, we'll try to do that. And we're looking at December, excuse me, November 28th, 29th for those, and then we want to talk to you, just to make sure, and we, by the way, we would say, don't be at these meetings. This is one that you stay away from, because you give people an opportunity to really be open and honest and candid, and remember, we're gonna report this to you as well, so there aren't gonna be any secrets with that. And then we'd like to report what we found on December 13th. It's a regularly scheduled board meeting. We'll zoom in, and it's really gonna be just our findings. And so it's a 15-minute presentation that gives you the, the feedback that, you know, you're, you're interested in. We're gonna reference check from December 28th to January 10th, and what we do on our reference checking is we go, every candidate, as part of our application, has to have three written references. Some are gonna have five, some are gonna have 10, but we go off the written references to make sure that, you know, we're not just listening to the people who the candidate has gotten a hold of and asked for a written reference. So that, those could be association people, it could be some of your, some of the staff here, it could be superintendents throughout this area, this region, but we'll go, we'll go pretty deep in those reference checks, because one of the things that Shar and I want to make sure of is that the people who apply are who they claim to be. We don't want any surprises. And when we do, when we get a candidate application that's completed, we start with a phone call and about a 30-minute oral interview with the individual, just going through the resume, going through their interests, making sure that this is something that they're very interested in and that, you know, their, their credentials match up with what appear, they went to a certified college. We've had some people apply that misrepresented where they went to school and degrees that they have. We want to make sure that that isn't the case. And then we want to, to just get a sense for, you know, who we're working with, but, and we'll do that, and then we'll also ask for permission to contact our references. Now, because this is an open and transparent state, some superintendents are gonna want to know that they are a serious candidate before we, they allow us to talk to their board members, and that's just the nature of it. When we can do a search that we don't have to be public, clearly we get more applicants. My guess is Missoula's gonna continue to draw good people just because of location and reputation, but that's kind of, that's where we are, so we'll take a couple of weeks to do that. We'll come back in then on January 10th, and that'll be about a four-hour meeting with you, and we'll, we will bring finalists based on our best assessment of candidate skills and your criteria. And the, I would assume that it'll be anywhere from five to seven, that'll be on a short list, and we like to bring more than you want to interview, which is typically three to four, because we want you to work through some of the materials, watch the video interviews with each of the candidates, and then we'll work you through a process of elimination. So let's just say for argument purposes, we bring you seven semifinalists, and when we're all done, we'll have you basically indicate who you're most interested in, we'll do a waiting, and then we'll determine from that point are you interviewing three or four. We would strongly suggest it'd be about three, you know, maybe four if we, if we got the high-quality applicant pool, because too many, too many people being interviewed means too many communities, if these are sitting superintendents, that are, that are gonna be nervous about their superintendent perhaps being here. So in anticipation of the, of the question, how many is the board going to narrow this down to? The smaller the number, the better the odds of keeping candidates in, because one of the things that happens in open searches, just to be perfectly clear with you, and we've done a lot of them, is that sometimes a quality superintendent goes to their board and says, "I want you to know, I've been in contact with the consultants from Missoula County. I'm very interested in the position," but if they're in good standing with their board, it's not uncommon for their board to turn around and say, "What does it take to keep you here?" And that's just one of the things we just want to prepare you for, too. It's a very competitive field. There were 900 vacancies in the country last year. We're seeing a whole bunch of superintendents that are, positions that are opening in the United States, and with the election on Tuesday, I have a feeling there's gonna be a whole bunch more superintendents in other states that are gonna be looking for other positions, too. But we'll keep you posted on that in terms of, you know, how many are there. Would anticipate, you know, 20 to 30 folks will complete the application process, that's kind of what we're seeing. And then we'll, we'll come back, when we come back, we'll do that, that'll take about two hours, two and a half hours, and then we'll work with you on interview questions. Do we have a homework assignment for you? And that is that we like to ask each of the board, members of the board, to compile three to four questions that they would like to ask during the formal interview, and we'll send a reminder, you don't need to do that now, we'll send a reminder to you, and I'm sure Tracy will be very good about that. But you get those to us, and we'll incorporate them into a, into something that's legal, but also makes a lot of sense for, for candidates. And that makes it unique to you as opposed to using a bank of questions someplace. And we have plenty of banks of questions, but I, we really would like to put that on you to create that, that, that list of questions. And then, so we were looking at January 19th, 23rd, 24th to come in and do the final presentation of candidates. And I think we wanted to pause there and see if there's one of those days that works better for you than the other. It can be in the evening, it could be during the day, it's, it's really your call, but we want to get it on the, on the schedule. And we need to tell candidates, too, that, you know, finalists for interviews will be selected on such and such a date. So I'll pause there, if there's a date there that doesn't work for somebody, and we, we really would like all the board members to be there, if at all possible.
Go ahead, Tracy. If that makes sense for me, does everybody else agree? Yeah, I would stick with that, the 24th.
That's a regular board meeting? So would we start early?
We would incorporate it.
Okay. And again, it's about, could be up to four hours of work. Okay. All right, good. January 24th it is? That was easy?
I would say we can make it a special meeting and move it up.
We can. What if it's a regular, we're doing now, 4:30?
Yep.
Instead of having an emergency, that's a special.
Special. All right, thank you.
And then we have on the 24th, and by the way, when we bring these finalists or semifinalists to you, and you're gonna create the finalists, we let them know what the interview dates are going to be, and then we make sure that they're gonna be available and that they're still interested. And for us, it's really about doing that dance between, okay, we're getting really close now to narrowing it down, are you still in? And, and are you available that week of January 30th? And what our model calls for is a full-day interview in your school district, and we encourage candidates, because many times this is a family decision, to bring a significant other, spouse, and, and just enjoy what Missoula has to offer. And we'll work with you and your staff on creating an experience that really is pretty good. So I'll just give you an example of, of sort of what I think is the, most districts will do. Candidate shows up at nine o'clock in the morning, is greeted by the board chair, if she's available, and it's really a meet and greet, welcome, so glad you're here, enjoy the day. And then there's typically some time with the superintendent, and then there's some time to visit one of the schools or two of the schools, a little tour of the district, and then depending upon which groups you want to use to create a feedback flow, and we would suggest that it be staff. Certainly cabinet should, should have a, an opportunity to meet with each of these candidates. We, we love to encourage a student group, that, that if they're, you could, that you could do them, we typically would schedule them over the lunch hour at a school, and then a parent group and/or a community group. So that is a, just an opportunity to broaden some perspective. Here's what we tell each of the groups. We don't let them rank candidates, but they get a sheet from us that'll be handed to them by a facilitator that basically says, "What's the candidate's name? What are the candidate's strengths? And what are the questions that you might have about the candidate?" Right? So guaranteed, some candidate, particularly in Montana, if they're a Montana candidate, somebody's gonna have a brother-in-law in that town that's gonna know something that nobody else knows, they will write that on that, on that sheet. And if anything emerges that we weren't able to discover, we'll, we'll be able to discover before you make your final decision. And then we would just say to you, schedule a time to do the deliberations. Now, you could do it after your last interview, which a lot of boards will do to avoid scheduling an extra meeting, but you definitely want to do it as quickly as possible, because these superintendents, if they are sitting superintendents, which our guess is they probably will be, they're, they're gonna, their boards are gonna be on pins and needles wanting to, to find out that they have to do a search. So you're, you're a tier-one district, and what that means in the search business is you're getting out in front of everybody else, because whomever you select then creates another vacancy if it's a sitting superintendent, right? So just know that that's, that puts a soup, that puts a candidate in a pretty precarious place, but quality candidates will say to their board, "Missoula only comes open every four, five, 10 years. I'm from the area, or I've always wanted to be there," and, and they've gotta, they've gotta work that from, from their angle. And then once you make the selection, we'll work on some transition time. We like to, I like to recommend that somewhere between five and 10 days of wherever this new superintendent's coming from, that you had in purchase typically a per diem, an opportunity for them to come into your district, participate in key hiring, attend meetings, maybe get to know some of the community groups, could be any number of things. Look for housing. Housing's been really tough in the last couple of search seasons, but, but whatever. And it's just a good gesture, and it gives your superintendent a chance to kind of hit the ground running, because when they start on July 1, which I understand, we understand is your start date, there's gonna be a lot of ownership in this individual, because people will have participated on the front end, they may have been invited to participate on the interview side, and then they're gonna get a chance to see the superintendent without the superintendent having any official duties. So this process gets you then a superintendent sometime, I would imagine, early February, if not after the last meeting, and you'll probably have to work on that, Tracy, unless you've given some thought to, time to schedule it. You'll have to schedule that meeting to make that decision.
We would have a meeting in February on the 14th and the 28th would be our normal meeting days in February. If you wanted to push something there, we'd have the meeting, the special meeting on the 24th of January.
I feel like that's too long of a gap.
Yeah, we can do a special meeting if we need to on the 3rd or the 6th. What would you guys prefer?
So that's a Friday?
Yeah, that, that's when we have one scheduled, right? The last one tend, tentatively? February, right?
February 3rd. And that would be on a Friday.
Yep, or we could do early the 6th.
Now, 6th remembers a no-school day.
Early the 7th.
Do you want to do it?
Is even that too long? After the 24th, if we're doing our interview?
Right. Oh, they changed it. It's just not changed on this calendar. So we could do it on the 6th? Monday, the 6th?
Yeah, 'cause we have the last ones, trustee interview candidates on the 3rd, correct? February 3rd?
January 24th, I thought.
January 24th would be the special meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I would do the 6th.
So 4:30 on the 6th for a special meeting? Would that work for everybody? On February 6th, 4:30.
And if, any trustees online have any questions, feel free to just jump on. Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
Yeah, I had a question for them. So do you think February, I'm sorry, February 6th is a good time to, to move that fast? I mean, or is, you hear me?
For me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's say the last, the last, the interviews are the week of the 30th, January 30th. We don't like to see, like, like to recommend too much time passed after that final interview. And so it's really, when you get done with that last interview, you marinate, right? And if there's anything, anything that's emerged, you get a hold of us, we track it down, you'll have the feedback sheets. When you go to deliberate, you'll have your interviews, your perceptions, the notes that you took, plus you'll have all the perceptions of the stakeholder groups. And so, yeah, I think, I think certainly that next week is, is very doable.
Just to be sure, sorry.
Trustee Decker.
I'm sorry. So if the last of the full-day interviews and visits is the Friday, then a special meeting that Monday night gives you all enough time to compile the, from, from the stakeholder groups that would have met in person during the day and all of that, is that weekend enough time?
You, you, you will get, you're talking about the interviews?
The, the full day, yeah, the full-day interviews. So if, if one is on a Friday, we could do this special meeting on that Monday, two days later?
And the answer is yes, because you will have that information. Tracy's the point of contact, could be somebody else, unless you want one of us to be present for those interviews, which, you know, is optional, it's not included in our, in our package. But what you'll have is after each interview, you'll get a, somebody will collect the individual, I don't want to call them scorecards, but just a perception sheet. So let's say, for example, they're meeting with students. You'll, you will designate a chair of each of the groups. So you got a student group, you got a chair of the student group, we're gonna come back and do some training with each of the designated chairs of the groups. We'll tell them exactly how to conduct the interviews. The interviews are 30 to 45 minutes, and then the chair will be instructed to make sure that everybody fill out one of those perception sheets. Those will be collected, placed in a sealed envelope, nobody gets to look at them until you're ready to deliberate. And so if you want to deliberate on, you make your decision on, what was it, the 6th, then you'll have that information, that's part of your deliberations. Yeah.
I'm sorry, so the night when we're all sitting here, we literally are gonna have the envelope with, like, or, and we're, we're gonna have, say there's three candidates, and each one of them had six of those meetings or something, we're gonna have 18 envelopes with the raw information in it to, like, pass around together that night?
Or copies of them. And, you know, what you can do, too, is you can collect them, you can make copies, and you can have them delivered over the weekend, so you have time to read those over the weekend.
And I'm thinking, I'm looking at Tracy now, thinking that makes for a pretty bummer weekend for Tracy. I just, I just wanted to be realistic about whether there's time to do what we would want to do to make it a smooth process with a Friday and then a Monday. I like doing it quickly, but I think we need to make sure that any of that processing, that any, this is a significant commitment of staff time, and I want to be respectful of what that takes to actually do for the admin staff that are gonna be hustling.
Nope, those are great questions. How, we wouldn't be able to access those sooner?
Yeah, you can. Once they're done, when the last interview is completed, you now have the information that you need from each of the groups.
What if we had the information from someone who we interviewed on Wednesday? Would we have access to that sooner than having to wait until Monday?
You can, but here's what you want to avoid. You, you can't, you can't get, you just gotta be really careful, because you want to look at them in total, right? Three candidates. So you may get candidate A that everybody says, "Wow, don't even interview anybody else. Candidate A is the person that we all want," but then candidate C comes in, and then all of a sudden, you know, candidate C wins it. So it's one of those things where, it's just like with the interviews, we like to do them pretty, pretty, pretty close to each other, so that there isn't, people aren't making their minds up too soon in the process.
Okay, so one of the goals I had as chair coming in, knowing that we would have to do this search, was I wanted to make sure that, one, the board members had access to anything, and you did state that they shouldn't attend the 28th or 29th. I think it's important for the board members to be in any meeting they want to be in when it comes to this search, and you can, we can discuss that, and the board can jump in, too, but for me, I think it's important for us to be not only visible, but be, be there. And two is I wanted to make sure this was really transparent, that the community knows that where we want to, we want to hire someone that's good for not only the administration and the function, but with the community. So those were two things I really want to make sure that we do.
And again, if you're talking about when we come back and do the stakeholder meetings, the only thing I would say to you is that it's been our experience, you can do it any way you want. I mean, we can certainly have board members attend if you want, but you're, particularly with staff, you might not, you might have people that'll hold back on what they really want to say if they see board members present in the room. So our recommendation always is, let the consultants work with the stakeholder groups, because we can make it, it'll be open and transparent, but we can also make sure that, you know, they're not, they're not under any kind of an assumption that, that somebody's gonna come back to the boardroom and say, "Let's, here's what the bus driver said."
Yeah, I don't think our boards like that, but who knows? And I, and I see trustee Mercer's hand up, but I just want, I think we, if any board member wants to attend anything, I want them to have access to be able to do that. I think that's important for us, as our roles is elected officials, so that's one of the things I wanted to make sure that we communicated, that they have that access if they want it.
Okay.
Trustee Mercer?
I think we should commit to either not do interviews on the Friday or move it from Monday to, like, Tuesday or Wednesday. I just, I'm not gonna be able to look at it Monday. Monday's a miserable day for me, so, yeah, still a little more time.
Trustee Decker?
Are the written materials that a person would write down in one of those stakeholder interviews, then because we're gonna be using them as part of our deliberations, are those public record, and those are actually not confidential, what people would write on those interview forms, right? So the discussions that might happen in those So the discussions that might happen in those stakeholder group meetings. Might be out of the view of the board, but the, anything that people would write down would have to be treated like we treat public comment, I think, right? Yeah, so it would have to be visible to anyone who wanted to see it because of our public meetings laws.
Yeah, that's, you're right about that. So, I mean, we, we can't keep anybody from going to those meetings. And if you're, if you feel compelled to do so, then you know, certainly do it. And you're right, that would be something that could be record requested. You know, which kind of puts some of the people that are participating in a tough spot. We'll need to explain that to them as well because that just makes it a little bit more difficult for them. Because we need them to be honest, right? We want them to, what are the percept, what do, what do the students think? What, you know, one of the things that we, we, that sometimes is a separator. Is we get back from the students, didn't really talk about the student experience. Right? Well, that's, that's kind of a, I mean, that's just, that's just not a good thing for a superintendent to not talk about student experience. So. We'll manage it.
Okay, so, um, real quick trustee Afgharaz. Following up with trustee Mercer's comment. Should we move from the 6th then instead to the 7th at 4:30? That's a Tuesday. Does that work?
That would give me more time to compile.
Does that work? Thumbs up trustee Vogel, trustee, alright. We'll go ahead and do that. We'll move that, that from the 6th to the 7th at 4:30. Okay, trustee Afgharaz.
My only caveat to that would be is depended on how many interviews we have. So we have interviews starting the 30th. If we only have three interviews and they're done Wednesday, we probably shouldn't wait almost a week before we deliberate. We should probably have at least say one day buffer, so I guess we can be flexible in that.
Just hold a couple of those, hold that Monday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday?
Yeah, just kind of, yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll have enough time to be able, in our calendar to do that. What do you guys think online? Trustee Vogel? Yep, okay. Trustee Wallach? Thumbs up trustee Sherman? Yes, okay. Alright, so we'll go ahead, tentatively we'll say the 7th. But we'll hold Friday and the Monday as well based on number of interview candidates. Okay. So. We still, we still have more to go, but that's, because we have to do, um. We do have to do a motion for the timeline. And this is, are you at the end of where you were speaking about that?
No, I want to, um.
Few more?
Just a couple of other things.
Okay.
So as part of the stakeholder engagement that we do, we've, we schedule an open community forum, so. Tracy will, will let the groups know that a consultant's going to be at a certain location, here's the time, provide input. The board's very interested in gathering voices on the front end of the search. We'll handle all of that. Then we'll do one community forum, which is Monday night, which is an all call to the entire community. So anybody can come up and we, we typically get pretty good turnouts for that. But to make sure we get a good turnout, one of the things that we would like you to do. Is to think of three people who you believe should get a personal invitation to this. From us on your behalf to participate as in a stakeholder meeting. Okay, so we've got the groups, they're all going to be notified. These are internal groups with, with some of your parents. We're going to do one open community forum just to make sure that we blanket this, the, the community. And but what we'd also, if you have three people, could be former board members, could be, could be legislators, could be whomever. You give us their name, you give us contact information, the home office will send them a personal invitation to come to the community forum. On Monday night at wherever it's located. And I will tell you, when they get one of those invitations from us, they come. And so if you, if you don't have three names, don't worry about it, but if you do, we would ask you to get those names to us ASAP. So that we can get those invitations out. The only other thing I have on the stakeholders.
Steve, I did ask them to bring that tonight, so we should get that to you right away.
Awesome, thank you. Perfect. The other thing is that when we meet with these groups. We will, before we dismiss them, ask them if they would like to participate in a meet and greet slash. Discussion slash interview as part of that large interview day. So that's how we compile the names of people that are interested. In participating in that interview schedule. We'll give you those names and then you can designate a chair. And you can designate, you know, you can't have everybody, right? So we like to keep these groups as part of that interview day. For 45 minutes, like to keep these groups 6 to 8, 10 at the absolute most. And they got to be willing to commit to, if we're going to, if you're going to interview three, they have to be willing to commit to all three. They just can't do one and not the other two. It's three separate days, yeah. Right. Yeah, so again, your, your, your teachers, your staff members are going to be after school. Some of your non-certified might be during the day, students probably at lunchtime is what a lot of districts have done. Your parent group, you know, can be 4 o'clock, 4:30. And then, you know, if there's any other groups, we could, we can bring them, and we'll work on a schedule for that. But we want to meet these folks to find out what kind of interest they might have in participating in a process. But you'll have to help us with designating a chair. We need a responsible person that can assemble, get trained by us. And then assemble the group so that they understand, you know, what, what, what are the do's and don'ts of what they're doing. And remember, we tell them they can't rank the candidates, although they're going to try. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Any questions on the timeline? Trustee Afgharaz?
Sorry, this isn't on the timeline. It's going back to the search, just real quick. You talked about the vetting process and you talked about how you, you know, you look, make sure their resume is legit, you make sure. You know, you go through their references, things like that. What about an online search, you know?
Yeah.
Somebody says something funny on Facebook in 2011 that, you know, can go sideways. What, what system do you use that, uh, you know, can vet that? What, what, what's out there?
Couple of different approaches. One, we say to each of the candidates. When we do the, that 30-minute interview, when we're serious about them. Is there anything in social media, in your background? That if your name gets made public, can be an embarrassment to you or to the Missoula County Board? And you'll be amazed at what we get. I mean, this is true confessions. This is parking tickets in, in college. And then the second thing we do, we'll do the Google search. And we, we find that we're, we're doing a pretty good job. You know, the, the Facebook, some, every sitting superintendent. That I know of, in any search, there's something negative in fa, in, in social media. And so we just need to know what that is, right? So many times. Well, you, you lived through it because every district did, but you know, the superintendent. There's a group in a community over masking that's calling for the superintendent to resign. Right? So that gets, explodes in social media and there's a lot of comments. You know, we want to know, we, they have to tell us that. But we'll do a social media search as well too. The other thing that we do with the finalists. Is a criminal, financial and educational background check. So that, you know, we know that, again, we're not bringing in somebody that is posing as a candidate and doesn't really have the stripes for it.
Maybe this is for Tracy. How do you want us to get you the names of our three people? Or do we just?
I can collect them tonight or you can email me.
Okay, and there might be like really common names between us, so like we can't all say. Susan, hey Patrick, exactly. So like, so should we give? I know. Um, but so maybe that's fine, that we'll have overlapping names?
What I think I'll do is I'll let you know if there's a duplicate and then we can go from there.
Okay, thanks.
Now, one, as you, those of you that haven't turned in your names, don't be afraid to. Think about one of the vocal outspoken. Have all the answers to educational challenges people. Because this would be a great learning experience for them as well too. And we, um, we actually enjoy interacting with some of those folks too and. And they more often than not are impressed with the process and the openness and their opportunity to, to engage. So think about that, but you'll have the three people.
Oh, those people will come.
Yeah, they'll come to the open forum, sure.
Okay, so if everybody is okay with the timeline that was discussed, I need a motion. To approve the timeline with the held dates for the finalists. Moved by trustee Witt. Second by trustee Afgharaz. Ending board comment. I just want to say thank you Tracy for doing all the stuff for this. Alright, all in favor for approving the timeline? Oh, sorry, public comment. Good, alright. All those board members in favor, please indicate by raising your hand for yes. Unanimous to all trustees present, including the three online. Alright, so the timeline has been approved. And now we're on to the application. Um, back over to you, Mr. Joel.
Yes, so the application is really pretty straightforward. Everything's collected through the home office. We, you, you don't, you don't see any of that until we finish with the vetting. Okay, so what we basically tell candidates is if you're not a serious candidate. You don't, you don't need to get your community up in arms or anything like that. We'll let them know, that's part of our service. However, we'll, and I have to think through this in, in, in a, in a state where it's absolutely. You're like Florida in a lot of ways, right? Because of your open and transparency. I don't know, that, I, I, I'm only thinking about it from this, from this standpoint. Pardon me? The weather, the big difference is the weather, yeah. So, so in Florida, the, the rules of engagement in Florida, quite frankly. Is if we have a telephone conversation with a candidate, we're supposed to turn their name over to the media. And now I realize that's, that's a little extreme. But one of the things that we'd like to do is let you know who all applied. Because sometimes you may have a question, you know, why didn't so-and-so make the semifinalist list? But I don't know if that is then going to be something that's going to be reported via the media. If we're going to get that many people to stay in it, do you follow what I'm saying? So it might be the kind of thing where we, uh, let me ask you this question, Madam Chair. Can we work with a smaller committee? Of board members?
Yep, so we don't have quorum. We definitely can do that.
And I don't know if you're comfortable with that, but I'm only thinking about the, the full application list so that you know. You know, we, we did, we had more than the five, six or seven that we're recommending. And I need to give it a little bit of thought. It's probably going to take a delayed flight on the way home tomorrow to figure that out, but.
Okay.
I don't want to lose candidates over the transparency. But I also don't want a whole bunch of candidates to be fearful that their names are going to be made public and they're not serious contenders.
I do want to be as transparent as we can, especially with our community members. Trustee Decker?
I'm curious whether there might be some way, because I guess what you're getting at is that you all would sort of pre-select a smaller group of candidates to be brought before the whole board. And if that were to be part of the process, I'm wondering if there'd be a way to like. De-identify, like take people's names off and, but have some amount of information that can be shared, like. We had 17 applicants. Four, we did not pass the screening process because this, this, this. Three, we took a second look at because of that, that, that. They had these qualifications, but not this. So that we have some sort of like bigger picture that we can lean into and should someone want to dig deeper, you've got those records, like. I guess it just feels a little, I don't actually love the idea of only seeing a couple of names out of 20 or 30 that might apply, like ourselves. But I also like the idea of pre-sifting because I know how time consumes. I mean, that's what you all have expertise at, right? So maybe there's somewhere in between.
Yeah, we can do the leadership too, the chair and two vice chairs. And we're not a quorum and we can.
Can we think through that a little bit? Because really what we do is we summarize the applicant pool. And that would be an easy way to get at it, right? We have 20 applicants, we'll bring in your four names. They're most closely aligned with your skills, traits, characteristics, have good track records. You know, we'll do a thorough vetting of them, you'll get to see them. But we had four other Montana superintendents apply, we had three from Idaho, we had a couple from Wyoming. I mean, we could do it like that. We had. Three associate superintendents and smaller districts. I mean, and we do that as a matter of protocol, but. I'm, I'm just trying to in my own mind. I don't, I don't want to come in with a list of names that we have to turn over because somebody who isn't a serious candidate. Is going to have a board member in his office the very next day saying, you didn't tell me, you know, you were an applicant. So. I'll think through that. Maybe we could work with a leadership group. Maybe there's a meeting, a Zoom meeting we could do. Once we get into the vetting, we can give you an update and then you can advise us accordingly.
That will work.
Okay.
Trustee Mercer?
I fear we should ask our counsel because if this blows up, the contracts on, it just blows up. Like they don't get to be superintendent anymore, so we cannot make a mistake on this. And so although it's not a quorum, it's the information coming to. Board members as part of official hiring, I, I question whether that would be sufficient protection, but counsel could tell us.
Have you met our counsel?
I've not met your counsel, no.
Do you want me to contact her tomorrow and ask that question?
Yes, please.
And I'd be happy to, we'd be happy to have a conversation with her as well. Yeah, we, we don't want to, we definitely don't want to get crossways with your open meetings law. But we also want to get the best candidate pool we can. And to, to the point that was just made, we want to offer the most protection we can. Because most states are not like this, just so you know. And, and, you know, but we've worked in Florida, we've worked in Nevada. We've worked in Arizona. I mean, there's plenty of states where. They're dealing with a similar set of circumstances that you are. So we'll, we'll work it out. I mean, I'm, don't. Let's not get our dovers down because I still think we're going to get great candidates. Okay, that's all I had on that, unless Shar did anything that, oh, one other thing I would say, if you as. And I know most of you are relatively new on the board, but if you know of a potential candidate, somebody that you met at a meeting or. You know, you read something, if, if there's a name out there that, that you, in, on the front end, before they even apply, you want us to contact. If you could somehow get those names to us privately, we'd be more than happy to follow up on every contact. We do that in every search. You may not have any. We're going to be contacting some of your association people and ask for, you know, who are the. Who are the up and comers? Who are the people that are ready for a Missoula? But if you've got somebody in mind, as long as you're not related to them, send a name. I, I think, I think we've covered what we need to except for the work to develop the criteria.
For the application, any questions in regards to the application? Any trustees online? See, no. Do we have a draft of the application?
Home office has a standard application format, so the application really is. They have to, they have to, it's a resume, it's experience, it's education, it's references. And then we'll, we'll put a, a question based on one or two questions, essay questions. That they'll respond to and that'll, that'll be driven off of the criteria that you develop here in a few minutes.
Okay, so you just need us to approve that we're going to open the application?
We typically don't need approval of the application because we, we handle all the applications.
It's more that you're going to approve the application that they're using.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't like approving it if I can't see it. Is there one in here?
That's not something.
Trustee Decker? Is that something? Trustee Decker?
Is, is what we're approving actually happening after we have the conversation about developing the criteria because of what Mr. Joel just said about. about that conversation driving the essay questions that the person will have to submit? Like, the conversation we're about to have, I think, informs the application? And maybe that's what we're going to be approving?
If you would like to, I mean, you, you, I mean, certainly, you could tell us what essay question you would like on the application. Or, and I'll be honest with you, and maybe this is where the leadership group comes in. When we, when we do the video interviews, we create three questions for them to respond to during the video interviews, which helps inform you then in terms of their quality as a candidate. But if you want to approve that, or you want to assign that to come up with those questions, that's fine with us.
Yeah, and I would leave that up to any of the board members. If they wanted to, any of them wanted to submit that to you, I, I want us to all have access to be a part of this process. And I don't, I know that it might be, get convoluted here or there, but I just want to make sure that if trustee Sherman, trustee Witt, anybody wanted to, wanted to attend or be a part of the process, I want them to have that access. So that it's, I know we hired you, but I still want us to be able to be a part of the whole process. Not at a hand, not at a distance, but to be truly so that we can say we were very involved.
I'd like to just say, trust us. But I understand, I understand your point. Here's, here's, on the, the application is a formality. Okay, so it's, it's a standard application. I mean, there's, we could send you a copy of one that was done in a recent search. We can edit out, you know, the specifics. It's really just a way to organize the candidate's profile. They have to upload references. And then we, some, we throw in one essay question just to see how they write and express themselves. The real value in the process is how they come across in the video interview. And then how do they actually interview? Not only with you, but with all of the groups. And that's where your involvement is front and center. Everything else is background information to get ready for the culminating event, which is the interview. I mean, if you have an application in Missoula that you want us to consider, we could do that, too.
No, after hearing you speak some more, I'm okay with approving the application. I just wish we had something, like a draft or something in hand, if that's what we were going to do. Just for future reference, this would be a note for the next, further down the line search. But yeah, no, I'm happy. So I would entertain a motion to approve the application. Trustee Decker?
Sorry, not to belabor. Before, before we do that, and I will, I'll be happy to do that in a sec. But could you share an example of like the essay questions that you're talking about? That seems to be the only vague part of what would otherwise be a pretty standard kind of, you know, resume, references, et cetera.
Okay, so we're going to profile the position. It's going to begin with you when we're done with this. You're going to come up with three to five skills, traits, characteristics, right? And then we're going to, we're going to word them in a way that makes sense. So it's called profiling. So we're going to create the profile of success. Off of that profile, let's, I'm just making this up. We need a visible, transparent, engaging, experienced superintendent. I just made it up. With, with the ability to continue to improve educational outcomes for all kids. Right, sounds good. We, we would create an essay question. And it would be simply this. Given the profile and given your experience, how do you, how does, how do you, does your experience as an educational leader align with the profile that's been developed to achieve ultimate success? So, and again, I'm rambling here without having it in front of me. And so then we say to them, you get 200 words to address that. Right, so after 37 years of experience as a superintendent, the last 12 in Lincoln, I've got a, here's how I did this, 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 and this. They make it 200 words, it goes into the application. We read it, you get to read it when that gets formally submitted to you. So what we try to do is take, is capture most of what you say tonight, put it into one essay question. If we have too many essay questions, experienced superintendents frown on it. They just don't want to do a whole lot of writing because they're busy people. But one good essay question, 200 words, really gets it. And, you know, if you, you want it to be consistent with what you're looking for in your next superintendent.
Trustee Decker?
So with that clarification around the process, I propose that we table voting on this item until we've had that conversation. And at that point, with clarity around what our criteria are and understanding that we are in fact having a shared understanding of that at that point, then we would have an item on the agenda to approve the application, including that part that is yet to be determined by us.
Trustee Witt?
Does that mean we could put it later on the agenda tonight? Because it would be after the next couple of things?
So I move that we move this item till later?
Sure. I haven't had it tabled yet. I haven't had it tabled yet, so that one's new. Okay, I'm fine with that. We can move number six to behind number seven. So we'll move on to number seven? All right, because we had, number two is the pledge. Because we, pledge wasn't on here, so number two moved to the pledge. So it moved everything down. Sorry, I felt like we needed to do the pledge. Yeah, it's on Monday. So we'll go ahead and move on to number seven, which is the compensation package and job description. And then once we get through this, then we'll move back to number six.
Okay. So my, that's a question that we have from you, is compensation range. What we like to put in our profiling is that compensation will be competitive based on experience. But, and Tracy sent me a copy of the existing contract, which I think is well, good, bad choice of words, which is informative. But candidates are going to want to talk with us about compensation, right? They're not, they're never going to talk to you about it. So we need to have a ballpark in mind, right? So this would be just an open question to, to members of the board. How do you want to work compensation? I will tell you that candidates today, because it's a diminishing market, candidates today are driving a little higher compensation than they would have. And if it isn't enticing, they're liable to not want to leave their district for even a greater responsibility. So what we always say is it should be as competitive and compelling as possible to get the right candidate. So it's an open, it's an open discussion. And we'll take our marching orders from you.
So I'll have the board look at the blast page of our information packet. It has the background information for superintendent salaries to go ahead and get that discussion rolling. Trustee Witcher?
Hey there, can you remind me what the size of these school districts are? So I can compare that to compensation?
Mr. McHugh?
I think Dave might have that information. But I could guess for all of these schools. The Great Falls is right in line with us, size-wise. Buda's smaller, Kalispell's smaller. Belgrade is, and Bozeman and Helena are all smaller. Billings is bigger by 60%, 70%.
Yeah, and I can find out that information for you. And of course, it also differs that we have more schools than a lot of districts as well, the way we're structured. So I think really only comparatively, Billings would be the only person on that list which is larger than us. So, but I can find out the total number of schools. Because I think it's more than just the number of students, it's also the, the size and the number of schools a district might have as well.
Trustee Mercer?
I guess, Derek, is this, have we ever had a range? Or has it always just been a number? Is it, is it an experience thing? Or is it just this is the position? And if you're getting the position, this is what we pay?
I couldn't tell you what the other districts do. I know, I think a lot of the times those things are negotiated, but they're a set number. I don't think that many of them hire within a range. I think that they negotiate when they've selected the candidate. I know we've had quite a range here in Missoula over the years. Pat, is that correct?
Yeah, but I think we've posted it at a number. Is what I believe it's been posted, yeah.
Trustee Witcher?
In comparison to recent superintendent searches, if we were to go with a number around there, how competitive would we be?
Initially, our sense would be, would be competitive. But it's going to need to be there or, you know, slightly above. Candidates are probably going to look at the number that's there now and, and negotiate for something a little bit higher. Depending upon what they're making, where they currently are.
Trustee F. Garris?
So the size of school will matter, but also cost of living will matter. The cost of living in Missoula is a lot different than Billings. We're probably more similar to Bozeman or Buda, yeah. So, you know, if they come here, there's a certain level of living that someone's going to expect. And that's probably going to be more than most of these other communities.
So I guess I'm, what is being asked of us right now? A hard number or just a number we put on the thing?
Sorry about that, I'm going to interrupt. We're just posing the question to you. It's going to be negotiable, right? Is there a number that we need to stay within? Or are you comfortable with us basically saying compensation will be competitive and commensurate with experience? And the region, you know, I will come up with a way to word that.
Trustee Decker?
We don't talk about salaries very often as a group. Like, we talk about it when we talk about the superintendent's salary, basically. And so I think it might be informative for board members who don't know much about how salaries work in the district to have a moment to learn a little more from maybe Mr. Roth, if he's willing. Like, just what is, for example, like a top teacher salary in our district? What is a typical administrator's salary? We have on the paper here what the current superintendent's salary is. But it might be useful in making this decision to have a little more context.
Well, I could forward the board, it would have to be tomorrow, but I could forward you a copy of like the administrative salaries. We go off of the high school principal, which is 100%. And that, I believe, is like 131,000 right now. And then other positions might be 101% or 70% of that, or 80% of that. So our teacher's salary right now is about 40, a little over 40,000, starting, to a top of about 84,000. Though we have teachers that are, I, we have a teacher, for example, I just noticed the other day was doing enough different stipend work to be over 100,000 pretty easily.
It's super helpful information, thanks.
Yeah, I'd be, would you, if the board would like, I could send out those salary ranges to you so you can say again in our district what we're paying.
Trustee F. Garris?
So if we do say, you know, compensation based on experience, blah, 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 you're going to understand what our range is. So if somebody comes and says, well, I'm a, I'm a 275 guy or gal, you're going to be like, well, this probably isn't the position for you.
Yeah, we do that all the time. What we typically do is we start with your existing contract and, and we, we work from there. But we're honest with you when we talk with you. If, if they're 100, if they're $30,000 or $40,000 above where you are, then this is probably not the location for them. But you also, it's pretty rare unless somebody coming in that you select, say, comes from an associate superintendent rank or a much smaller district, it's, it's pretty rare for them to come in much less than what the existing superintendent is making. Does that make sense?
Trustee Witcher?
Mr. McHugh, what is, what is our top range? Like, what can we do?
You know, I think because you're dealing with a single position, single salary, you have a lot more latitude. And it's more a matter of, as you guys are talking about, what is commensurate? What's commensurate in the area? What's commensurate within the school district? But, but from a funding standpoint, I would say you have more latitude because you're talking about a single position.
Vice Chair, Hobbins?
Thanks, I just think that we need to be, for sure, posting this as one of the most, like, you know, the best place in Montana to be if you're a superintendent. Especially if like, we could get somebody from somewhere else in the state. And so I think we need to be competitive with Bozeman and Billings. And I know Billings is also searching for a superintendent. Although somebody who would want to live and work in Billings might be totally different than who wants to live and work in Missoula. But, I mean, I think we just got to be, we got to be aware that we have to be competitive and show people this is the place where they want to be.
Trustee Witt?
I'm somewhat curious because I know back when we had the prior governor, he had a thing where you had to post ranges on open positions. It was like a, it was a thing to increase, well, decrease the inequity between women's salaries and men's across. Yes, so is, that's still a thing in our state? Were there, because I know it was a, it was a thing that he like signed an executive order on. I don't know if that executive order was rescinded or not. And it makes me think that we probably should put on a range. And I know that's a common thing now. But I'm also curious with you, if, if you put a, a range, do they all assume that they get the top of the range? Do they assume that they get the middle? Because when I, I have seen pay ranges that like comply with that prior governor's order, and it says it's 80 to 150,000, I was like, well, what good is that range?
So to answer your question, trustee, we don't like to put ranges in there. What we like to say is it's negotiable and commensurate. And then we make sure that they understand where the existing contract lies, give or take some percentage on either side, right? So if it's 175, you might look at, a candidate may say, well, I can't come for less than 185 or 190. But we're not going to bring in somebody at 230 or 240 because you're probably not going to be able to do that. And so it gives us a better, unless you, yeah, we would say, don't put a range, let's make it negotiable. And it's all negotiable. And by the way, they're going to negotiate a lot of other things, too, right? So it's going to be about benefits. It's going to be about moving expenses. It's going to be about vacation. It's going to be, you know, the things that are, to, to Dr. McHugh's point, this is a sole employee of a district, right? And this is an individual that is going to get the best contract on the day they arrive. And then they're going to be marking with everybody else, like 2%, 3%, 4%, whatever the packages are typically. And so superintendents, particularly the good ones, are going to drive the hardest bargain on the front end. And they're going to say, compensate me on the high end of the range and hold me accountable to perform at the high end of the range. So we don't really like ranges.
Trustee Mercer?
Yeah, so I guess clearly, we're not going to pay less than we're currently paying right now. I just, how far up we go, kind of the point about Missoula. Wages in Missoula are depressed versus other places. People want to live here, and you can take advantage of that as an employer and not pay as much. I mean, that's sort of the reality of living in Missoula. I think we need to be careful not to set someone up as they walk in to say to our existing teachers and whatnot, well, you know, they didn't get 8% cost of living last time. I just think that's, makes me nervous to say. Anyway, so I think, I think what you, how you articulated is good. I personally would be surprised if it would go up that, that, that much more, would be my sort of sense, but... Also, 175 is a lot of money.
And Pat, you can correct me, but I'm pretty sure our prior superintendent was at 185. So we've had ranges up over 200 in the past, though I don't think we want to go down that path again. But we have had a range. And this, I think, is the lower end range right now. And to his point, I, we don't have any, we don't advertise any of our jobs with a range. Everything that we have in our district is set under contract, very specific. And so the amount that you earn is based upon the experience, the other things. And this, there isn't anything that's negotiable. The things that would become negotiable at the, the superintendency is exactly what he's talking about, the, the secondary benefits. And those are the things that are usually done or have previously been negotiated when we had Bia step in and help with that contract to negotiate those types of, of terms. But ranges, you know, I think the point is when you have those low-range, high-range, people do tend to focus on the high end. And then often you have to explain yourself as to why, anything less, so...
Trustee Decker, then trustee Mercer?
These salary conversations... These salary conversations are so challenging, because this is a lot of money for most people to consider, right? This is a very high salary in Missoula, where the median wage is still, you know, $50,000. Like, the average family is not doing well right now. So, these are sensitive, difficult conversations to have, important ones. This is also a national search for a really incredibly important role in our district, and we do need to be able to attract the right person. And I think how we, like, decide about this, just it communicates volumes beyond what the dollar amount is. Our annual district operating budget is of a size that a $10,000 difference in one way or another on the superintendent's salary, we do, in fact, as Mr. McHugh says, have, like, flexibility to push things around like that. But the optics of that are kind of what we're talking about, and sort of how it feels to the people who, you know, ask us to take care of the money. And so, just knowing all of those things and putting them all out on the table really transparently, I think, is important in saying, we're pretty comfortable with around where the salary was. We're hearing that this is about a... This is a competitive salary as it looks on the face of it. Our previous superintendent was making about $10,000 more. I think, I mean, I'm just going to go ahead and say, I'm comfortable with around that level. Not comfortable with something that feels like any kind of big jump in this particular economy, and, you know, given how that seems. So, that's where I'm at.
This may not be the time, but I want to know, how did it go down?
The school board negotiated that rate with our current superintendent. Am I incorrect, Pat, on the prior amount? I thought it was in the 185 range.
I think you're right, but I can go check.
Vice Chair, Walker Andrews?
I guess I'm just going to say what I would anticipate seeing even before this conversation is that you would say, commensurate on your experience, years of blah, 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 the current person makes X, period. And then it's up for negotiation.
You're going to have doctorates, you're going to have non-doctorate degrees, that's going to be a factor. And so, I mean, is there a chance that the person comes in lower? Yeah. But you don't want to lose the person you want over several thousand dollars.
Does any trustee want to throw out a number? Or just do what Doc... I like what she said as well, what Vice Chair Walker Andrews said.
I second that.
Trustee Wallach? Good. Trustee Sherman? Okay. Jen jumped off. Trustee Vogel? Okay. All right. So will we go with the 175 or what Pat went to go look up?
Well, I thought we were simply saying, it's commensurate on blah, blah, blah.
Negotiable.
Negotiable. The current... And we don't have to put that in the app.
Don't put it in the app. No, don't put it in the app.
And he'll say, currently, it's whatever it is. So...
I like that.
Trustee Wit?
Yeah, my understanding is that now he has an idea of, this is what our ranges are in this state. And so, he's going to kind of go with, if someone says, I want to, like, I'm only interested if it's 250s, and be like, I don't think you're going to get that here.
Vice Chair, Hobbins?
Um, just to be clear, this is 175 for our current superintendent, right, who is an interim superintendent. It was higher when we had Dr. Rob Watson, who we had, you know, who we had recruited for this position. I think we start back there when we're recruiting for somebody to be at that level of superintendent, not where we are right now with our interim superintendent.
Vice Chair, Walker Andrews?
Well, I think, Nancy, you've made a very good point, but I still think that we just say it's negotiable, and it depends upon whether you have a PhD, 45 years' experience, et cetera, and this is the current amount. I mean, I know what it is right now in Cranberry, New Jersey, because I just looked it up. Anybody that's applying for a job can find out how much we're paying now, how much we paid last year. There's no secret at all.
I do think, I mean, to your point, I think that we need to be as transparent... I mean, I understand people can Google anything they want, but when we're talking about kind of like equity and transparency and encouraging all applicants to be, to, you know, apply for something that we say, this is what the salary is. I think that's... I think it's really important to name the number, so people don't think like, hmm, I wonder if I would actually get, you know, at the top of the range because I'm a woman, or I'm a person of color, or I'm, you know, I mean, what... I think it means a lot to... And I think it's not necessarily like a range, but just putting a number out there is really important.
Trustee Mercer?
If there is a number, I didn't realize that Mr. Lodge was making less than Dr. Watson. I was totally thinking in terms of Dr. Watson. To me, that's the number. That's... If there's a number, it's that number.
But Dr. Watson had a doctorate, and if there's a superintendent that comes in with less experience or education, starting them there would be... But it's $10,000, and like trustee Decker said, like, if it's 10 grand, it's... I know that sounds crazy to someone like me who's a public servant and does not make much money, because 10 grand would be a lot, but in this case, it really isn't.
Trustee Decker?
And we're also not having the negotiation, like, right now. And I think saying, I mean, and saying that, you know, that we could even say that the current, like, that the most recent salaries have been 175 and 185. I mean, I think there's a lot of ways that we can be real about that. I don't think that we're probably going to hire someone for less than what we paid before. I don't think that that would happen. And I think we can put either of those numbers out there. I think people will get that information. And it's... Trustee Hobbins, I think your point is super well-taken, and that's exactly why trustee Wit asked about the equity and pay range requirement, that you... That if there's a range, that you publish what that range is. If we're being advised not to publish ranges, I think that one of the best things that we can do is to say what the current position is getting.
Trustee of Garris?
The other part that we have to understand about this is that Steve is a recruiter. So, recruiters represent us, and they represent the candidates. So, the candidate calls him, they're going to say, well, how much does this pay? Well, it's paying this right now, and the last one made this. Okay. And they're going to ask him a lot of questions that hopefully he's going to have a lot of background on. How many superintendents have they had in the last 10 years? Why did the last one leave? Why is the one currently leaving? Those are eight questions they're going to ask of him. So they're going to get all this information. Steve should have it ready. I would assume you'll have it ready when they ask and walk through the door. So, there's no secrets. We're not trying to dupe anybody. They'll... He'll be giving them that information, because he's trying to get them interested in applying and saying, hey, you know, we can get... I'm sure we can be in a range that you'd be interested in. Now, did I speak out of curiosity, right?
Well, and if... I'm super comfortable with that. If we can just talk to candidates and say, they're going to make it competitive, go in and earn the job, and then what we'll make sure of is that they're not coming in way over price. Because we now, in my mind, I know your range, right? But I also believe that for the right person, you'll go a couple thousand bucks if you need to get them, or you may go lower if they don't have the kind of experience that I think they're going to have when we bring them to you. But we need that latitude. But one thing I would just correct on, and that is that, you know, we represent you, so we don't, you know, we don't know these candidates yet, but we want to be honest with them, too. Because we... If they say to us, if they won't go 180, I don't want to be a candidate, we just have to let them... I mean, if you... But, you know, I'm hearing you say you would for the right candidate. So, we don't really want a number in there.
Move on if we... Mr. McHugh?
I was just going to respond to the question that was out there, so that for last fiscal year, Rob's contract was 189, 112. So that was through 2022. Past practice was the increase was consistent with what the certified staff increase was, which was 1.5%. So, 1.5% added to that, you'd be at 191, almost 192,000 this year.
Any final comments or questions on the compensation, then we can move on to the job description before we make a motion for item number seven. I don't see any. So, Vice Chair, Walker Andrews?
You wanted a motion, is that what?
I know, because we still have to talk about the job description, right?
We don't have any questions on the job description. Job description looks good to us.
Does any trustees have questions about the job description?
The only question I have about the job description is, we were saying that that would drive an essay question. Are we going to have that discussion?
We're going to do an exercise to develop criteria here in a minute.
All right. So should we do that first before we make the motion for that?
Well, the criteria really isn't the job description.
Okay.
The job description is what you formally adopt in terms of superintendent responsibilities. You have a good one. That was probably done with the help of the state or legal counsel.
So we can go ahead and approve... I can entertain a motion to approve the compensation package and job description then. Trustee Witcher?
Is it the superintendent's role to maintain and have strategic goals towards a strategic plan? Because I don't see that mentioned in the job description. And I do feel strongly that that's something that needs to be added.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Absolutely. It's a function of the superintendent. But that's something that you should do in conjunction with the superintendent coming in. But here's what I would say to you, Meg. Make that one of your questions in the interview. What's your experience with strategic planning and strategic thinking, or strategic thinking and planning? I don't think you really want to get into the job description, because that ought to, most districts will take quite a bit of time to study for that if they're going to make wholesale changes.
But when we... That was part of our previous superintendent's evaluation, was his work with the strategic plan. So I see where you're coming from, trustee Witcher.
I just know in the city, like, our job performance is based off of our job description, and so it's measured very firmly on it. And so, this superintendent, I want them to know that that's part of their job.
I agree. Any other trustees? Trustee Wit?
Yeah, the way I would word it is something like, they're responsible for following the board's strategic plan while implementing it and coming up with procedures that support our strategic plan. I would word it somewhat like that.
So that would be number 20 for the essential functions, then? Is that where that would go? Trustee Mercer?
You could also just put it in two. Implements board policy as directed by the board's trustees, including implementing the board's strategic plan for the district or something.
I like that placement.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Either two or four, you could add it. So...
What are your thoughts, Mr. Joel?
Well, I think those are certainly valid. I mean, that's what a good superintendent should be doing anyway. But again, I... It doesn't seem like tonight's the time to change the job description, but certainly I... I'm not your advisor in that capacity.
I would entertain a motion for us to approve this with Meg's addition to number two, on how trustee Mercer's said it. Trustee Wit? You're good. Motion by trustee Wit for approval with the additional number two with Meg's suggestions. A second? Second by trustee Mercer. Any final board comments? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving item number seven compensation package and job description, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, trustee Sherman? All right. Motion passed. Now we'll move back to item number six, the application. Or do we need to do his? Oh, okay. We'll do the activity, and then we'll come back to item number six.
Okay. What are we working on now?
Your activity.
Acti... Oh, the activity. Okay, sorry. Yes. So, again, just so that we're clear, what you're going to do is you're going to create the first iteration of what we're going to begin recruiting for. What you come up with tonight, we will vet against your stakeholder, with your stakeholder groups, right? So, you're just helping us get this framed, so we can get it advertised, and we can get it out there. And when we come back and visit with your stakeholders, if there's any disconnect with what you came up with today, we'll be certain to let you know that. So, what we... What you do tonight's not etched into granite, it's just a starter for us to begin to have the conversation. And we want to do a brochure. Okay? Clear? All right. So here's what I'd like you to do. On a sheet of paper, I would like each of you to write down three to five things that you're looking for in this next superintendent, individually, because we're going to come back and we're going to create collective consensus. So, three to five skills, traits, characteristics that are important to you.
We will need a mic as well for him so that the trustees online can hear as well.
Testing.
Okay. That was an easy technology, so, okay, bring it up. Yep, that's good, thank you, Brian. Okay. Madam Chair, may I begin? Okay, so here's how we do this. We're just going to start with Meg. And you give us the first one that you have. We're going to go all the way around. No explanation, no nothing. Just give us the first one that's on your list. And Shar's going to write it up. And then we're going to go all the way around. We don't want duplica, yeah, we, yes, yep. And we don't want duplication. So if by the time we get to Madam Chair, if all of yours are taken, they're taken, right? So the key is to get all of them up there. And then we're going to do some, then we'll come back and we'll do some explanations. So you have to remember which one of yours we've accepted because you're going to have to defend it, or at least articulate it, why that's important. So we're going to have some conversation about why did you select what you select? Is that clear? And then, so I don't forget, just remind me about the, do you want to start with the ones online? We can, we can do that if you'd like.
Did you want to go first, Meg?
Always.
Yeah, we'll start with Trustee Witcher.
I said passionate about public education in rural states.
Okay. And we're going to write small deliberately so that we can make sure we can get it, to get them all up here. Because we're going to have you, again, we're going to do some combining. Good one, thank you. About rural schools. Okay, good.
Uh, mine's just leader.
Okay, leader. And if, by the way, if you have something to, that has to do with leader and you want to just add to that, all you have to do is say, yep, that's okay, I'll take that.
Uh, commitment to equity demonstrated by district-wide impactful actions.
Okay. Say, commitment, commitment to equity. Demonstrated by?
Uh, measurable district-wide actions, yeah.
Commitment, commitment to equity that is measurable.
Yeah.
I just said calm in the face of storm. That is highly functional while in stressful situations.
Not in Missoula. Calm in the face of storm, what was the second part of that one?
That is highly functional.
Okay. Calm in the face of storm and?
Friendly.
Friendly.
Radically accessible.
Radically accessible, okay.
Create change.
Create change. All right, we'll switch to another board now. So we're now number eight. Uh, we got Keegan yet, right?
Good listener slash learner.
Good listener slash learner. Okay.
Trustee Wallach?
Trustee Wallach wrote innovative, adaptable, data-driven.
Innovative, adaptable, data-driven. Good one.
All right, Trustee Sherman?
Trustee Sherman wrote, realizes?
Recognizes, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Recognizes that parents are the ultimate authority in their child's education.
Recognizes parents as ultimate authority of child's education. Okay? Is that everybody then? Okay.
Jennifer Vogel. Trustee Vogel wrote, ability to listen and communicate well. Transparent, problem solver, able to think outside the box.
Is she online?
That's, that's a few different ones in there. So what was the first part of that one?
Is Trustee Vogel online?
Yes. Yes, she is.
Yep. She said it perfectly. Ability to listen and communicate well, but I know we have communication up there too, if you want to just add to it.
Okay, sorry, I just, I didn't see you on the screen.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and list it. So ability to listen and communicate well. And what was the second part of that?
Transparent.
And transparent, okay. Thank you.
The third one I have is a problem solver.
Oh, no, we're just doing, just doing you first. Just, everybody's doing their first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. Okay, now, since you, you let off, we're going to go to Jeff. What, what else do you have on your list?
Unifying.
Unifying, okay. Good.
Compassionate and empathetic.
Compassionate, empathetic. What do I mean?
I think mine probably has already been captured with the passionate, whatever. Uh, understand the importance of education and helping children and their families thrive in our complex world. I write long sentences.
Under.
Unlike one words.
Under, understand, read that one more time.
Understands the importance of education in helping children and their families thrive in our complex world.
Understanding the importance of education, so students and families.
Passionate about education in whatever.
So is that up there someplace and?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's kind of close.
All right. Okay.
Um, family-oriented, family.
Okay, family-oriented. And again, you're going to get a chance to give us some rationale and definition to these so we know. Maybe what we should do is put one on over there, that way you can work on those. Would you mind doing that? Thank you. Okay, uh, that's your, right?
Brilliant. Brilliant.
Brilliant.
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Brilliant.
Great relationship with staff.
Great relationship with staff.
I want to add to the unifying, if, if Jeff will let me, where it would be community-focused.
Good. Okay. Unifying, community focus. Yep. Community focus. Okay?
Trustee Wallach?
Hey, can you guys hear me this time?
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't hear what he said.
Cool, my three points were separate. I think you listed them all as one.
Okay.
Do you have another one you want to add in this round?
Yeah, so I just had the three innovative, adaptable, and data-driven. So if you want to split those up, then you can, otherwise, yeah, those, those three are what I had.
All right, Trustee Vogel?
My second one was transparent.
I think we have it. Don't we? Yeah, we have transparent, ability to listen, communicate well, be transparent. Okay? All right.
Trustee Sherman?
Thank you.
Someone that realizes that college isn't a viable option for many of our students and is diligent in seeking out other options for success for those students.
College not the only option for students.
Perfect.
Just trying to simplify it a little bit. Okay, did we go all the way around? Yep. Okay, Grace, you're up. No, no, she, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we're going to get back to me. Thank you.
Unafraid.
Unafraid.
Knowledge of current research.
Knowledge of current research.
Uh, mine's really the same as Rob's. Conferent with statistics and the promise and limitations of testing and assessment.
Okay. That's sort of the data-driven. So knowledge of current research and assessment practices? Okay. And then let's put data-driven in there too. And we'll scratch it out of the other one.
Patient.
Patient.
Um, someone kind of has to do with create change. In my mind, it was kind of like being curious and being an agent of change.
How about we just put it up there? Curious, uh, curious and?
An agent of change.
Embracing change?
Embrace change.
Okay, embrace change.
Academic excellence.
Academic excellence.
Mine is, like, since everything I wrote down is pretty much there, it's just clarifying things on it. So good relationship with staff. And so I want to just clarify to put also the unions, because we have, I don't remember how many, like, seven?
We have four unions with nine different groups.
Nine employee groups, so yeah, so there's unions and employee groups.
Okay, great relationships with staff. Are they called unions here? You have unions, okay. With unions and employee groups, good. Okay, all right. Online people, Zoomers?
Trustee Wallach?
Like I said, you got all three of mine in the first one.
Okay, good, yeah. And don't be afraid to pass if we've got yours. Good.
Trustee Vogel?
Um, my third one was a problem solver, but that probably fits in well with some of what the other trustees have said.
All right, let's list it. We didn't get those two words, so we'll list that as a?
Problem solver.
Okay, problem solver, thank you.
Trustee Sherman?
Someone who actively encourages programs that enable the students to travel and learn from other cultures.
One more time, please?
Someone who actively encourages programs that enables the students to travel and learn from other cultures.
Okay. All right, good, thank you. We got all yours?
You've got all mine.
Okay, great.
Uh, my last one is decisive.
Oh, decisive.
Like us.
Grace?
I feel like this, this may be related to something that's already there, but a track record of building consensus around change.
Okay. Consensus builder around change. Sounds like you like change.
We'll even know about three more, but I think most of them have been in the cloud. So, uh, I guess the final one was respects families, teachers, and students.
Okay, respect, families, teachers, and students.
My last one is up there, but I wanted to say it again, but mine was loves public education.
Loves public education, okay. Can I, can we add it to this one over here?
Yep.
Okay. Loves public education. Doesn't like it, loves it, right? It is.
I'm not trying, trying to edit yours, Arlene, but I would add in staff to that. So teachers, maybe instead of teachers, maybe staff.
So which, which number?
Into the respect families, teachers, and students.
Oh, good, thank you, yep.
I don't have any others.
Go on.
Uh, support students, and then I'm done.
Support students? Okay, we're not, let's go Keegan's, Keegan's up.
Believes in the strategic plan. Even though I think sometimes we're just reiterating it up here, but?
Say it again.
Believes in the strategic plan.
Okay. Did you say believing in the strategic? Okay, bu, okay, belief in strategic, in the existing one. How current is your existing strategic plan?
Uh, last fall, wasn't it?
Okay, so you're, in year one of a five-year plan? Okay. Online folks, I, my presumption is you're done? Okay. All right? Do you have any left? Okay. You said you were done? Okay. Honesty and integrity.
Mine was similar. My last one was values, integrity.
Okay.
Our values, ethics, and integrity.
Okay. So let's go honesty, integrity, values. Okay? Done? Okay. Done? 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 Everybody's done? All right, great job. Okay, so now here's what you get to do. Tell us why you put that up there. So passionate about public education in rural states.
I think that we're in a unique public, or a political climate, and I would like the superintendent of our amazing district to be someone that is looking to be a precedent across the state when it comes to legislation and public education and what our needs are.
Okay, all right. And remember, when you're, when you're doing this, obviously, we're not going to write a brochure with 30 of these, right? So we want to strengthen them. But if you feel like what you've got up there is a standalone, we're going to do some weighted voting in a few minutes. We can certainly leave it up there. So the key is, let's do some combining if we can. Jeff, what do you mean by leader? Never heard that before.
Well, I was trying to think of words that we could put in a question, like you said, of 15 or 20 words that they could write off of. So leader's going to encompass most all of this, right? It's going to be a person that follows by example, or leads by example. People want to work for, they're not told to work for. Somebody that's collaborative, somebody that has a vision that is responsible to their employer, which is this board. Everything that you can think, I mean, I could talk for an hour what is truly of a leader.
Okay.
But I think it's just trying to come up with things that would help encompass a lot of these things.
Good. Commitment, excuse me, equity that's measurable. Commitment, excuse me, equity that's measurable.
How long do we have? So if we want to keep having the outcomes that we're having, we can continue to live with the system that we have. If we think that the outcomes that we have are not good enough, based on where children live, or the color of their skin, or their gender, or anything else, we gotta change the system if we don't think the outcomes are good enough. So we have to have a leader who knows how to not only talk about equity, but really hold that as a core principle.
Okay, got it, good. Leave it up there, I mean, it's one of those things, we'll see how it weighs out, if in fact, that's, that's standalone. Calm in the face of storm.
It's just that things have been very, um, a lot of upheaval in the whole country, and schools are often at the center of that, and I think you need someone who can listen to people, let them hear that he heard them, or she heard them, and respond, but not being like me and going off like that, but rather calm.
I think the superintendents that are still left have figured out how to do that. And you had the next one, I think, um-
Friendly.
Friendly.
And I put that because just seeing how closely we work with administration as board of trustees, especially the leadership, you wouldn't be able to have a friendly relationship, someone that you can work with and not have any barriers. So I think that's really important, is that they're personable, but I always just thought friendly was a nice way to put it.
Radically accessible.
Yeah, I guess I had to throw in radically because I really mean it, but, um, I think, you know, that it's, it's kind of stands alone, but I think our, our new superintendent needs to be accessible to us, to, to their staff, to students, like, knowing who the superintendent is, or who, you know, what kind of that, what that person represents, and to the community as a whole, so.
Okay.
It's a big, big job in accessibility.
Create change.
We're not just looking for someone to keep the status quo, we want to be better, and we're willing to change to be better, but we're gonna have to have some, superintendent has a large role in driving that. The past few years, we've been sort of, because of events, we've put on hold many things we wanted to do.
Okay, that's good, and then, uh, good listener, learner.
Boy, is this gonna sound kind of almost contradictory, but not. So the good listener, learner, what I was hoping for with the superintendent is they don't come in and say, I have these, like, things I want to do, and just plow through, I want them to come in and take that first step to kind of, like, learn what's going on in the district, why things are the way they are, before we start implementing the changes. Really, just take the time to listen to people, make sure they feel heard, whether you agree with them or not, and then start working on the changes, but being a good learner.
If your strategic plan is well-written, and I believe it is, then that's your change opportunity, right, through your strat plan, but that's a good point, look, listen, and learn, good. Innovative, adaptable, data-driven, and I think we took data-driven and put it on one of the other ones, but you want to explain innovative and adaptable?
Sure, so innovative and adaptable, I think are pretty straightforward, uh, whether or not we are inviting change or experiencing it, it's gonna happen, and we need to be able to roll with those punches, you know? We've got a number of things that have shown that over the last few years, we had COVID happen, we have things like this SB 99 that's happening, you've got a new board, you know, there's just always something that's going on that we have to be able to respond to, and to kind of just take along the data-driven and finish that out. To be able to make decisions that are accountable to the community, to the voters, to the students, being able to utilize the data that we have to back those decisions, something that's going to be important, because then we can say, hey, this is why we actually went ahead and did this, you know, we're not just pulling something out of thin air, uh, this is the best decision that we can make with the data we have at the time, I think that's very important to make a point out of as well.
Good, got it, thank you, and then, um, parents, recognized parents are the ultimate authority.
I think during COVID, a lot of parents realize that they don't know what's going on in our schools, and in their questioning of those things, they have felt rather shut out, and I think we need to be really transparent and really encourage their questions, encourage their involvement, and I would like to see a superintendent who actively works towards that.
Okay, good, thank you. Ability to listen and communicate and transparent. Who had that one?
So those, I think, go with the trustee that said good listener, learner, the ability to listen and communicate well. I echo his thoughts that you don't want someone just to come in and say this is how it's gonna be, um, they need to listen first to see exactly how things are set up here, so they know where to fit in.
Okay, good, thank you, unifier with a community focus, who had that one?
Uh, that was me, uh, with insist from Keegan, um, so unifier, I think, kind of speaks for itself, someone that can, we have a, a lot of different personalities and, uh, challenges and, and agendas in the school district, and you need to be able to be a person that can unify all those into a, a direction.
Okay, good. Compassionate and attentive. Oh, empathetic, yeah, I remember that, that's right, good. Self-explanatory?
I, I mean, I think so.
Okay. Family-oriented?
That was me, I think, um, we're just all, we all have family, I, I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
Family-oriented, someone, you know, who sees that-
You're not looking for somebody that necessarily has children in school.
No, I mean, they don't have to have children in school, just, you know, that they understand-
But family's important.
Yeah, that, that's where we all stem from, is our families.
Just for themselves and for others, good. Brilliant.
I would like somebody who's, who we can all really admire in their, um, being forward-thinking and incredibly smart, I think that's a very important quality, yeah.
But you don't, do they have to have a doctorate in your mind?
Nope.
Okay, all right, interesting that that didn't come up. Great relationship with staff, unions, and other groups.
I think it's something our district has worked hard for and prides itself on, and we certainly don't want that disrupted by someone coming from a place that's in a state of warfare that wants to continue that.
Good, college not the only option. I think that was somebody online.
We did, uh, some campus tours over the last couple of weeks, we saw some really terrific paths towards careers that don't include college, um, I would like to expand on some of those, one that comes to mind, just the most recent one, was the auto program, um, and we heard that more kids are turned away than are accepted, I'd love to expand those and just really see more opportunities like that for our kids.
Okay, um, do, and just a question in my, in my mind, do you, do you have focus programs that are tied in with career opportunities in Missoula? Yeah, okay. Okay, good, unafraid.
Uh, I'd like a leader who's not afraid to engage in conflict when necessary for the bigger picture.
Okay. Knowledge of research and assessment practices.
I think I was just agreeing with Rob Wallach, I think that the school leader needs to know what's happening in the schools, what those numbers mean, and not, I guess, I'm, I, I want the person to be well-versed enough that when they see, like, a score, they don't see it as the end of the world, but rather, well, let's think about that. Kids weren't taking tests during COVID, kids haven't been participating, so what are the other possible factors?
Can we roll nine into yours, or yours into nine? Innovative, adaptable, data-driven, okay, all right, so let's do that, let's just roll, um-
I said something about research too, though, and I mean something different, data-driven in terms of, like, using the data that we have is one thing, what I'm talking about is being very aware of new national-level data and learning, because Montana is often 20 years behind the curve in adopting, um, research, and that's just because it's hard, and it's because until recently, we haven't always had-
Okay.
Grace, could you use your microphone, please?
Sorry, uh, I had said something also about research, and I was referring more toward, um, like, a knowledge base and keeping up with current national research around brain development, around learning, around social skills, around early childhood, um, around all of those things, uh, in, in addition to being sort of data-driven in terms of our own, like, test scores and assessments.
So how about we do this, how about we leave knowledge of current research as a standalone, and then put assessment practices and data-driven over in Rob's, okay? All right, patient.
I think that goes along with, um, trustee with, and trustee Vogel, with not coming in bulldozing over stuff, taking their time and learning them about the community, and not being very rash on decisions to really, just being able to see how I worked with previous superintendents as a board member, how important it is that they were patient.
So it's look, listen, and learn, put patience in there, okay, good, and then we'll scratch it out over there. Curious, embracing change.
Yeah, I thi- I feel like mine is, is kind of going along with what trustee Decker's talking about, about being curious about, um, you know, improvements in our system of education, and, um, wanting to implement those changes.
Which one would you put that in?
Um, Grace, where is yours? Yeah, I mean, I don't know, do you feel like that is fair, like, a fair kind of support to yours? Curiosity about-
Can you, can you call the numbers out?
I can't see it very well, sorry.
Oh, knowledge of current research?
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go, yeah.
So let's put, uh, uh, knowledge of current research, um, curious and willing to embrace change.
Curious learner, like, I don't, yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll flesh these out, then when we get a chance to combine. Academic excellence probably speaks for itself.
Well, I guess I just sometimes, we spend a lot of time about proficiency, if all our school district gets to produce people who are proficient, I think that would be a little disappointing, I think we can strive for more than proficient.
So you want to achieve at a higher level? Okay, okay, um, just, we'll leave it there, we'll see if it combines or anything, problem solver. Who had problem solver up there?
I think that was mine, um, I think that kind of echoes, um, what Vice Chair Walker Andrews was saying about being calm in the face of a storm, I think it's on one of these first sheets over here. That problems are going to come up, especially with the way things are headed in the country, and-
So calm in the face of a storm, but ability to solve problems, or lead to the solve, solution of problems.
Right.
Actively encourages programs that enable students to travel and learn from other cultures.
I think that's an amazing opportunity for kids to travel in groups, they kind of have a safety net around them, they learn specific things when they're traveling, but they're also exposed to new cultures, I think it's an amazing way to encourage them to do that after they graduate then, and I would applaud every opportunity for that to happen.
Okay, got it? Decisive.
Yeah, I, I think it kind of goes with what, uh, Chairperson said, that we don't necessarily want somebody that steamrolls over people and, and things like that, but we do, I think, want someone that, when the decision needs to be made, that they should be making, that they're decisive and, and passionate about that decision, so having a decisive, uh, uh, personality would be good.
Okay. Well, we'll-
So you're saying to combine that with eight, where the good listener is?
Good listener, learner, learn about the district, listen to stakeholders, be patient, but be decisive. Okay, let's put decisive in that one, good. Consensus building around change, who had that?
That was mine, I, I think it kind of goes with something about community and, um, there, one of the, the unifying with community focus and the good relationships with staff, it kind of ties to both of those pieces.
What numbers?
Um, it's hard for me, but I think number 12 it ties with, and also-
Unifying, community focus.
Yeah, and then good relationships with staff, that's the second one from the top on the, on number 16, it sort of ties there.
Unifying, community focus, consensus builder, and then great relationship, let's put 16 in there.
I don't know if this is getting ahead of it, but would 21 fit under that same bucket?
Curious and embrace change.
Or is my in the wrong one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is 23 to 29.
Okay, so, um, yeah, 27 then?
Okay.
Is that?
Respect families, teachers, students, and staff?
Is that kind of?
Yeah, I think it does, um, let's put that in there, well, respect student, parents, teachers, and staff. Okay, would, would, when we get through the last one of these, would it be okay if trustees came up and looked at those to help combine and clarify? I think it'd go a little bit faster. Okay, support students. It's in there, okay, take it off, I got you. Believes in a strategic plan, you obviously were part of that strategic plan.
I was not, I was not, but I liked it a lot, so, that's, that would be why, I mean, it had some issues where there's not enough, um, measurables, which I think, yeah, teachers would call them smart goals, but, uh, it fits in with so many of these other buckets, uh, because like, it fits in with the equity, that's a big part of our strategic plan, and like, the respect and the unifying, it, it really just, I think you could just scratch it out, because it's picked up in like, five other spots.
Okay, good, I, that's good, I agree, okay, so, and then we have last one, honesty, integrity, values, and ethics, is that important? Seriously? Who had that one up there?
Mike.
Okay. All right, so let's, uh, honesty, integrity, and all of that, let's, if we, if you don't mind, let's get you up moving a little bit, take a look at these, let's see if we can combine, see, we'll see what we're getting narrowed down to, and then we're gonna have you vote. And by the way, I'm gonna take these back, and nothing gets lost, not everything's gonna make it into the, the final four or five, but I'll develop questions that you can ask candidates centered on the things that you raised tonight. So that's how it'll stay alive, plus you'll have questions, so go up there and just help us with some combining and clarifying, and let's strengthen them, and if you think it's a standalone, you know, it's gonna have to get some weighting to, uh, to make it into the brochure. Can you all see that? Can you read those?
Trustee Vogel, no, they can't.
No.
They'll take a picture and put it in the chat.
What are these, whiteboards for ants?
Think about where you want to, you want to put the leader leads by example.
Yeah, so it's like ethics, it's personally ethic-driven, it's compassionate, attentive, empathetic, friendly, personable, brilliant, unafraid.
Unafraid.
Yeah.
We want them to make change, be decisive about it, but listen to it first.
And then you could combine academic excellence.
The way the academic excellence was described.
Meg, what do you think?
Eleven to eight as well, like we're just kind of throwing a lot.
I think eight and eleven.
You can get across 11 out.
Cross 11 out.
Yeah.
I think that this is separate than adaptable.
I think the zoomers will have to trust the work of our able-bodied cohorts here.
Agreed.
Mine was here.
Oh, curious embrace change.
We move that to something.
So what if we just created a new one that says personal characteristics that include friendly, personable, radically accessible to everyone?
Well, I think you can do that, so, so you can put...
So just put, make a new one that says...
It is. If the calm in and of itself, this is a leader.
Excellent.
But you do have honest and...
So that kind of...
Yeah, put that in there.
It comes from my, it ran from my...
Honesty, integrity.
At one of our schools, it was a title school and it didn't have things that...
So where'd Jeff go?
So my kid, hilariously, we were talking about climbing walls. So someone said, there's climbing, my kids like, there'd never be a climbing wall school. And I'm like, well, that's funny. I just toured a school that had two climbing walls. Yeah, which is great, but it's like, boom.
Which was funded by the, like, PT.
Which is what, right, what I'm saying, right. So that's what was abiding. It's because it's in a...
Just like the new baller playground at Pasadena.
Trying to find... I mean, as a standalone, it's probably not going to get enough votes, right? I mean, if you're comfortable, I would suggest take it off.
Totally fine.
All right. So let's remove this one. So... I don't know that we can put brilliant in a brochure. I don't think we can put brilliant in a brochure, but I do think we can put forward, admired, somebody that's admired with friendly, personable...
Forward-thinking.
Forward-thinking, yeah.
I think we're 14, where it was family-oriented. We meant to put in this personal characteristics that's too, right? So I'd put like 14 into this?
Yeah, yeah. I'm a little worried about the family-oriented one. Not that I disagree with it.
Yeah, no, totally. You can take it off.
But I think, I think some, yeah, we're going to pull family-oriented, only because I think that's defined differently.
In this day and age that staff have families and, and kids have families and it's a multi-generational approach to education.
But I do, I do think... Well, let's see how the voting, leave it up there. We'll see how the voting goes.
What's about to happen? We're going to vote?
You're going to, you're going to, you're going to, I'll show you. You're going to get to pick four.
Four.
You get to wait them, and we'll see how the numbers go. Okay. All right, so let's go back to our seats and then we'll get to this fun part. And I'm going to go through these one more time. And if you see any more combinations and, and clarifications, now's the time to do it, because what you're going to do is you're going to write down in order your number one, your number two, your number three, and your number four. And we get to pick four. So obviously, the way this is working out, we're better off to have stronger ones than standalone. So if there's something in there standalone, doesn't get a vote, it doesn't make it. Doesn't mean it doesn't emerge through the interview process, because we'll continue. Like I said, I'll take all these back with me. So number one, passionate about public education in rural states. Do you really want rural states in there? Does that need to be in there?
Yeah, I like our state, Montana.
Okay. In states, how about if we say...
But the problem is, is that if we say in Montana and they're from like Texas, then they're automatically...
How about if we say states similar to Montana?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Understanding how to help children thrive, love pu- public education, and as a legislative proponent or knows how to, uh, be a proponent of legislation. So that's number one. So it's passionate about public education in and, and some familiarity with states like Montana. Second one, commitment to, or three, commitment to equity that leads to measurable action. Okay? And what I'll have you do, take a different color marker and just put a circle around that. That way we know that's one they can vote for. Yeah, there you go. Okay, so we got two standalones so far. Yeah, just put a circle around that one. All right, calm in the face of, of a storm, a good listener, responds calmly, which I won't repeat, and then is a, is a problem solver. All right, so we'll put one around that. Friendly, personable, this is all the personality traits, so it includes 13, which is compassionate and attentive. It's the values, it's all of the things that you said, with the exception, um, and I have permission, we're going to pull family-oriented off just because that sometimes is going, that, that can just be confusing to potential candidates. Okay? So that's a, that's a standalone. We'll circle that one. So that's personal characteristics. Now, create, uh, create change, that has to be combined with, there's something else in there. Well, here's what I would say. How about create change into this one, which is the good listener, learner, look, listen, and learn, and then be decisive.
Can I just ask one question about, before we completely omit the family-oriented? Maybe family-friendly is a better way of putting it?
Okay, we can put family-friendly in there.
Or even family-focused, or, I don't know.
Family-focused.
I get that we don't want to make it sound like you have to have a family to have this job.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
But I also get that it's nice to work for somebody who understands that you have a family.
Okay.
Like, so, I mean, you know, I, I just, yeah.
Yeah, family-focused is, that's a good... All right, the next one then is, um... Where am I? Okay. Next one is, uh, assessment practices. Are we on to that one? Assessment practices, data-driven, to back decisions. Does that go someplace, or is that a standalone?
You could put it, I suppose, with look, listen, learn, because that's what you're supposed to be looking at, right?
Look, listen, learn, decisions based on data. Okay, let's do that. Data-based decisions. My guess is you had some test scores come out recently, right? Yeah, I know.
I think what it means, to me, it means more than just...
And people that are critical of public education, they're saying, look, they mishandled the pandemic, kids are behind, ACT scores are down, so I get it. Recognized parents are the ultimate authority in a child's education. Standalone, okay? That's standalone, we'll circle that. Unifying, commun- community focus, consensus building, good relationships, respect students, teachers, and staff, unions, and employees. So that's that whole staff, you know, somebody that can come in and engage and create and strengthen relationships with all staff.
Can you use your mic, Grace? Trustee Decker?
I don't know why I'm so bad at that tonight. Thank you. I feel like that, one, about building consensus and unity and all of that, might actually fit well, if it's not too late to do another recombine, with the being a decisive leader, two. So the good listener and things, to me, fits more with other types of characteristics or relationships, but this, the building consensus and like managing change. So it's kind of like a, a person who can build, both build consensus and be decisive when needed, like those both feel like both sides of the coin, of the leadership thing.
I think you make a good argument for it. I think it strengthens number eight. So it's really about a listener, a learner, somebody who can be decisive, but also has great relationships with members of the staff. What you're really looking for in eight is somebody that's going to be visible and engaging with your stakeholder groups. Okay?
I guess I, I object to the removal of unifying. If I, I, I just think that's an important value. I think the past year, our prior people did a great job navigating a whole bunch of things, and it wasn't just listening. There was strategic thinking, there was, I, I, to me, eight is, now you have eight, like, it's like three or four, it's breaking the rule of being three or four different things to me. And I guess I'm not sure what's this going to be versus like the word ones, like equity, brilliant, unifying. I guess I don't know what the, what this is going to become.
I'm sorry. Does unifying and consensus building, are those the same thing to you? So if one of those concepts stays?
Yeah, I'm, we're not going to get all of these scripters into the terminology. So a uni, you know, really what we're looking at is what's the, what's the, the, the gist, right? So the gist is, you know, a uni, a leader, a unifying leader that can develop consensus around problem-solving through being visible and engaging with stakeholders. I've just got to, I've just got to sit down in my office at home and just play it out. But what you're going to tell me is what's really important to you, and I'll be able to flesh that out based on this conversation. So, Cohen, I appreciate what you're saying because it doesn't seem simple, you know, like personal traits, leadership. You're really saying that, but you're giving it a different definition because it's your district today. College not the only option for students. Oh, I'm sorry. Family, no, we added put family, didn't we put family focus in here?
Five, yeah.
Yeah, put family focus in there. College not the only option for students, expand other opportunities. Knowledge of current research. Curious learner, we'll just put a circle around that. And again, if, if number 17 doesn't make it, there's a question that you can ask in the interview. Do all kids go to college? What are options for students that are not college-oriented? I've worked in districts where they all have to go to college. Academic excellence, you want that as a standalone?
We're discussing that it's, it doesn't mean everyone has to go. It's not the opposite of college. It's that we want everyone to be excellent in what they're choosing to do and more than just get by. We want them to excel in whatever they're choosing to do, whatever that may be.
Okay. You, would you, I, I understand what you want is you want students to attain their potential and beyond, right? Whether it's academic or vocational or whatever.
Yeah, my comment to him just a second ago was, could that actually be combined with the college is not the only option? Because you're being excellent in whatever it is, whether it's college or not, and you're, that's...
You okay with that?
Yes. I'm curious what, I missed where brilliant got crossed off, because...
Well, what got crossed off?
Brilliant, because fundamentally, we're hiring someone. I want them to be really smart and really good at things.
How do you measure that, though?
Some, I, I...
It's a feeling. It's why we chose your group.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem. Here's the thing. Most people would not see themselves as brilliant, right? I mean, if I were to go up to you and say, are you brilliant? Maybe you would say yes, but if I put that in a brochure, if I put that in a brochure, people are going to basically say, you know, I got a C in, in algebra in high school, you know, but I've learned a lot since then. So how do you measure brilliance? Is it a, uh, you know, is it a, is it a cogit test or...
I'm sold on not putting this in the brochure, but it will be a hiring criteria for me personally.
Well, but, but here's what I'm going to say. You're not going to pick somebody, right, that comes in and doesn't use proper enunciation, or doesn't, doesn't express themselves in a way that demonstrates intelligence. I mean, and I would tell you, all superintendents are intelligent, but if you have a candidate that walks in here and, and, you know, can't keep his, his or her thoughts together, or rambles, or bird walks, or talks too much, or whatever, that's going to be a turnoff to you, and you'll be able to make an assessment based on that. I don't want to, I don't want to put that on a brochure because you won't get any candidates because nobody sees themselves as brilliant. It's kind of like the doctorate, right? I mean, is, there's districts that insist you have to have a doctorate. You can't not be a doctor in most university towns. I mean, the searches that we do. And I always say, boy, let's not put it in there because there might be somebody who can get a doctorate, or maybe they've obtained a doctorate, they just don't have the formal degree. I don't know. I know, I'm, I'm splitting, uh... All right, so let's leave it, let's, are you okay with that? I mean, I don't want you to fire me over it.
No, I'm good. That, that made sense to me.
All right. Last one then, actively encourages programs that enable students to travel and learn from other cultures, as long as they don't fly out of Missoula, right, because of how much it costs to get in and out of Missoula.
I think we all agree with that one, but I think it's up there with the attains their, their very best, whatever. I mean, that should be a way to get there.
So is it really about you want your students prepared for the world, not just Montana?
That's actually in our strategic plan.
Okay.
I'm not kidding, that is in there.
Okay. Okay. All right, let's do this. So here's what I want you to do, and again, it's not a pure science, it's just a way to get conversation so that we can share what is this board of trustees' most value in terms of your next candidate. This will help us screen. So if you vote for one, you're talking about somebody that's passionate about public education, similar state to Montana. If you vote for number three, commitment to equity that is measurable. Four is the leadership piece, calm in the face of storm, listen, respond calmly, problem solver. Five is personal characteristics, friendly, personable, values. Eight is listening and learning about the district, but certainly not afraid to make decisions based on, um, good data. Ten is recognize that parents are the ultimate authority in a child's education. Seventeen is college is not the only option for students, expand other opportunities. Nineteen is knowledge of current research, somebody that's a curious learner. Twenty-two is academic excellence, students to, um, to, instead of obtain, we'll just say to realize their potential and beyond. And then twenty-four is actively encourages programs that enable students to travel and learn from other cultures. Okay? So you get four. One is the one that matters the most to you. You give a one rating, two, three, and four. So I want you to come up with the top four.
In what bucket did unafraid end up? Eight?
Yes.
Which also has consensus? Eight's good.
Okay, no, no campaigning here before we vote.
I am a lawyer by chance. I am a lawyer by chance.
Yeah, I'm going to say to a candidate, look, I know you're not brilliant, act brilliant. That's what they want. I've never had that word come up in seventy searches. Well, just the brilliant, the brilliant piece, only because, that's why. I'm not trying to make fun of it, I'm just saying it's too tough to measure. Yeah, well, it is. No, not... The way you, the way your group on vote form is going to be unique. Everybody got number one through four? No? Okay, good. How about online folks? Ready to go? To the degree that you can put the number next to your correlating rating would help us in terms of being able to put it up there. So in other words, my number one is number twenty-four. Okay? All right. Everybody good online? Good? Okay. Can I start with Keegan this time? All right. Give us your number one, call out the number.
Eight.
Eight gets a one.
No, three.
Three gets a one.
I was just trying to understand eight.
Oh. Five gets a one.
One.
One gets a one. One gets a one. Three gets a one.
Eight.
Eight gets a one. One gets a one.
Trustee Wallach.
I'm sorry.
Trustee Wallach.
Eight gets a one.
Eight gets a one.
Trustee Vogel.
You know, if you don't mind, I'm just going to let you guys decide this. I can't see it and I've lost track of what's what, sorry. I trust y'all.
Trustee Sherman.
Ten.
Ten gets a one. Okay, trustee Mercer, what's your number four?
Four? Four, four is four.
Four is four. Four gets a four. Three gets a four, right?
Twenty.
Twenty gets a four. Twenty-two gets a four. Five gets a four. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let's, all right, sorry. Okay, so you had, what was a four? Four was a four. Three was a four. Sorry about that. Did you get, okay. Do we get yours? Does she get it? Twenty gets a four. Yeah, twenty's not on there.
Oh. Where'd it go to?
It's eight.
Nineteen gets a four.
Nineteen gets a four. Yep. Twenty-two gets a four. Five gets a four. Shaw's doing a great job. Three gets a four.
Three.
Three gets a four. Well, you didn't do yours yet. Okay, online? Number four?
Four.
Four? Four gets a four.
Five.
Five gets a four.
Five.
Five gets a four. Okay. Good? Okay, what's your number two? Eight is a two. Three is a two. Eight is a two. Eight is a two. One is a two. Eight is a two.
Trustee Vogel, or no, trustee Wallach, sorry.
Uh, four.
Four is a two.
Trustee Sherman?
Seventeen.
Seventeen is a two.
Number one.
Number one gets a two.
Eight.
And then eight gets a two. Are we good? All right, now we're left with three. What'd you give a three? Eight, eight is a three. Three is a three. One is a three. Five is a three. Nineteen is a three.
Trustee Wallach?
One.
One is a three.
Trustee Sherman?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four is a three.
Number four.
Number four is a three.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two is a three. One is a three. Okay, so number, your number one is eight. Your number two is one. Your number three... Yeah, ones, yeah, you got three ones here. No, you're right, you're right. I'm seeing, one, two, three, four, one, three. Yeah, this is, this is, well, no, I got it right. That's a one, three, a whole bunch of twos. So they're interchangeable, they're pretty close. So there's your number one, there's your number two. Number three is three. And then we have a pretty big drop-off. And then I would say number five is your fourth. Five, five is... Yeah, that's, that's the personal characteristics. So number one is this, this unafraid, all the leadership stuff. List, look, looking, listening, learning, paying attention to the strategic plan, patience, unafraid, the ability to create change once they understand what the complexity of the, of the district is and the solutions are. Okay, good job. I know it's a little confusing, but nothing gets lost. So when you're interviewing people, you're going to be able to flesh these out. But we just need to be able to get it out there across the country, in essence, let people know what this job is going to demand. So if I'm, if I'm looking for a job, I'm going to be looking at this criteria, because we tell candidates that all the time, be able to demonstrate that. Because what they'll expect is an interview with you that'll be centered on a lot of these things. And so if they don't have the experience, they're not going to get through the screening process. Okay? Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am?
My question is, how, whether the way we put them out there fits with almost every school district in the whole world, or are they all very different?
They're all, they're all pretty different in terms of how they get ranked, right? And so what I'll do, if you give me a few days, I'll, I'll write them up, I'll write up a draft, and I'll get those to Tracy, and then you'll see them. You know, unless, I would hope that you wouldn't want to wordsmith them too much, because all this really is, is advertising. So the things that you're saying, my guess is now your community groups are either going to tell you that's consistent with what they believe. I mean, I'm hearing leader of change, somebody that's going to be able to focus on data that can demonstrate personal characteristics that are consistent with what Missoula values or Montana values. But none of this will be lost, so I'll keep them all and be able to answer questions or create questions for you. We asked that you come up with three questions that you would like to ask candidates, and when we, when we come back and present those candidates, if you can get those into us prior to us coming and presenting, we'll go over those questions with you so that you know what the responses are. We'll work you through some basic interviewing. Most of you have probably been involved in interviewing processes. We'll give you some strategies and some tips. You can also expect that the superintendent candidates will ask you questions, and we'll tell you what some of the popular questions that they might ask of you. And then if, if need be, you know, I don't know how you negotiate your superintendent's contract, but we can certainly advise on that as well. So the next thing for us to do now is to get this advertised. We're going to shoot by the end of the week, having it out there, and automatically go on our website. And then we recommend that A double S A, which is the most hit upon advertising venue for superintendents and deputy superintendents that we advertise on, and that one, and Ed Week, Education Week, has an online version as well, too. We'll do a little research, we'll rely on staff, will the Montana school boards list this? Some states they won't, some states they will, and if they will, we should advertise on that. And then we definitely want it front and center on the website with a link to McPherson and Jacobson, so anybody that goes on your website can link right to the application process. Okay? And if you know of anybody out there that you believe we should contact, let us know about that person privately. And I assure you, we'll follow up on each one of those. But understand this, too, you know, certain conditions have to exist before candidates are willing to pursue their next opportunity. Okay? Done a lot of work tonight. Questions, comments? It's going to go fast.
No, we do need to go back to item number six, which is the application. So I'll entertain a motion.
Question first. Do we need, are we supposed to come up with the question that would be the essay? Is that something we're supposed to be doing? Or are you developing it based off of this?
Okay, how about if I do this, and this is pretty common? How about if I, we write a question that basically said, says this, "Looking at the position profile, what skills, traits, characteristics do you have that Missoula County, I don't know, did I say that right? That Missoula County schools is seeking?" So in other words, how do you align your skills, your traits, your experiences with their position profile? That's one, all encompassing, fairly general. It'll give them, it'll give you enough to read, give us enough to be in the vetting process. And then the video interviews, the three questions, we have three, three-minute questions that we give them, that they do, they'll do it on a video, they do it by themselves. It's a, it's torturous for them, we understand, they don't like doing that. But there'll be three questions, and I'll create those sort of off of this as well. One, I'll just take, the first one is always, tell us why you're interested in this position. And the second one is, should be, what skills do you have that are in alignment? And then the third one is, you know, and we can play with this one, too, if you have any strong feelings, is really, what are you proud of? Or what have you been challenged by the most in your professional career? Or what can we expect of you in the first ninety days if you're our next U. Potato? So we'll just kind of, kind of play it. I just need to really muld these over a little bit more and just make sure that I can put them in something that makes sense. Okay? Appreciate all your work tonight. You really did some hard work. You've, obviously, you all come from different backgrounds, but you share one thing in common, and that's your students and their success, and that's going to play itself out. But there's also a lot of you, so this was a good consensus building activity, because when you make a selection, you're going to have to do that. Now, I have to say that, know this, the closer you can get to consensus when you select, the stronger the message to the person coming in. I will tell you that, and I'm not saying this is mandatory, but they watch votes. Right? So it's one of those things where if, you know, you can't wrap your head around somebody, delay the vote, do some more research, you can always bring somebody back in as a sole finalist if you want, you know, bring them back to your community, with a lot of options. You can go visit a school district if you want, nobody really does that anymore. But if, you know, somebody's coming from Butte, you know, you want to go down and talk to people in Butte, you're going to talk to them anyway via the online. We're going to protect the identities of all of these people till the day we come back in here and present them to you. And, and we're going to assure them of that. We're going to give them, you know, because it's going to be an open and transparent search, they, they're going to be, you know, we're just going to say, you're going public today. So you need to let people in your district know that by six o'clock that night, you know, there's likely to be an article in a local newspaper about it. Do you have media that come to? Okay, good. All right, so that's it. We went twenty minutes over, questions that you might have, and we can stay for a few minutes, too.
Yep, no, we'll just do item number six, move by trustee F. Garrus. Second by vice chair Walker Andrews, any board comment? Yep. No board comment, any public comment? No public comment? All those in favor for approving the application process, please indicate your yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, trustee Sherman? Oh, see your vote. All unanimous to all trustees present. And we, he already spoke about number eight, which was advertisement, which was information item only. So now we're on item nine, which is adjournment, seven twenty-one.